Meeting to order with 6:35, local peg.
Councilman McCormick?
Present.
Councilman Grandy?
Present.
Councilman Palmerly?
Present.
Councilwoman Yor? Councilman Musat? And Council President Collins?
Present. Item four, possible motion to convene into closed executive session. A, the town council may convene into executive session to discuss, take possible action and/or vote pursuant to the relevant requirements of Rhode Island general laws 4246-5A, subsection two, collective bargaining. Union negotiations within NAGE, local R I, uh, forty-two. For a new collective bargaining agreement beginning July first, twenty twenty-five. Discussion and/or potential action announcement and/or vote from executive session and/or open session concerning negotiations with NAGE, local R one forty-two. For a new collective bargaining agreement beginning July first, twenty twenty-five. Grab a motion?
Second.
Motion made in second, in our favor? Aye, any against for executive session? And I want to invite the chief, our town solicitor, deputy chief, and our treasurer, Karen.
Okay, item five, we had a motion to close the executive session where we were in there. There was no votes taken. So now we'll be moving on to item six, which is proclamations, presentations and acknowledgements, review, discussion and or potential action or vote. A is Rita Lopey. Today was her 100th birthday celebration. She's not here tonight that I'm aware of. Okay, so we're going to do the presentation at the senior centers. Right, Cheryl? Okay, anybody who wants to come to it. All right, item B is the retirement of Norman Desplaines, electrical inspector. Mike, you want to call Norman up?
Let me read this for you, all right? It says, by these present, be it known that the town council of the town of Situate presents this certificate to Norman Desplaines in grateful recognition over over 25 years of commendable service to the town of Situate as an electrical inspector. Whereas the Situate Town Council recognizes your dedication and outstanding service, we set our hands unto this certificate, which is tendered on the eighth day of May 2025 with the congratulations and thanks of the Situate Town Council and the citizens of the town of Situate. Thank you so much, Norman, for your service. Say something? Okay, thank you. You need help back or you can get out. Okay.
Norman, Norman, you are going to be greatly missed. You are a great addition to the town hall, always with a smile on your face.
Okay, item C on is retirement of Bob Martin, Department of Public Works employee. He retired. We also had a proclamation, but he's not here tonight, so we'll be getting it to him. Item seven is a public hearing, review, discussion and or potential action and or vote. No participation on these public hearing items. Rather than open a public hearing, Dave Patraka, come to the mic, please, explain this.
Yes, so this was put down for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, zoning map change. However, for two reasons, one, an error in the advertising that listed the hearing tonight at town hall, two, the recommendation from the plan commission that there should be an amendment to the comprehensive plan before the zone change ordinance, the ordinance zone change, excuse me. So this is going to be renoticed and re-advertised for sometime in June when we can have another joint hearing as we did last year about this time with the plan commission to amend the comprehensive plan, whether or not to, and assuming if that passes, then you would go right into the public hearing to hear about the zone change for this particular property. So no actions necessary tonight. Nothing will happen until it's renoticed and re-advertised.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item eight, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Good evening, Michael Marcello, Chapman Street Road. A couple of meetings ago, I had requested, I believe the council approved that you're going to give a report, a written report on the status of the expenditures and the cost of the town hall renovations. I was wondering what if that, I haven't seen that, and was wondering what the status of that is.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I assumed that that was already forwarded to council. My error, you'll be getting it shortly. It's in the monthly report she's indicating. Did you not see it there? If not, we'll highlight it and bring it to your attention.
Mike, I'll get it to you.
Thank you. It'd be helpful if you just posted on the website. That's, that'll be great.
Okay.
The other question is the tax exemption that was improperly given to the Providence Water Supply Board. What's the status of that? I know that you said you were working on it, but has that been reversed yet or not?
It's still a limbo right now, the reason I told you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Thomas Gallagher in Pine Hill Road. I wonder if anything has been done on Pine Hill Estates. Have you asked our lawyers about this, if anything can be done to halt that project? And are we just going to let people bring water into our town when they feel like it? Because he's going to have two thirds of that place with Providence Water. How are we going to police that? That's all.
Mike, do you have any answer to that?
There's really been no further movement on that as far as our department is concerned. It's still in the planning stage. Johnson's still hearing in the planning stage. We've received nothing for anything formal for building permits or, you know, initial plans or anything like that at this point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Has he approached anybody about bringing in water? Has, has anybody on my council decided how we're going to handle that? Who will be in charge of it from the town? Are we going to have to start a water department in town? That's more of an expense.
Nobody's approached me on it.
So he just goes and does what he feels like in our town?
No, not at all.
Well, if he just brings water in.
It will go through our building inspector. That's what I believe.
I'm sorry, but I don't think there's any answer. You don't answer me. I'm asking.
We haven't taken any action because nobody's come to us yet.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Richard Finnegan, Ridge Road. Audit had recommendations on our last audit, 2024 audit. What is the town council doing concerning those recommendations?
We're in the process of dealing with those recommendations. It's in our intent to implement them.
Me, I'll update the town council on that.
I beg your pardon?
I'm assuming you'll update all of us.
Well, absolutely. It's our intention to get them resolved before the end of the fiscal year so that they won't reappear in the audit report, subsequent report.
I appealed my assessment to Catalysts, and I received a notice back saying I have 90 days from July 2022 to appeal. That was three years ago. I'm out of time. I don't know what can be done, so I'm asking for help from the town council if people want to appeal their assessment. Where do they go when they should have appealed three years prior? It's perplexing that we have notices that go out to taxpayers that are three years old. What's going to be done about this?
Richard, I'll check into it for you. I'll let you know.
I hope something would be done. I'm out of time. I can't go back in time.
You know the law, 90 days.
That was three years ago, 90 days. It was three years ago. I'm way out of time. So I would hope something's done about this.
You went to the Assessment Board of Review?
From Catalysts. They're saying
Go ahead, Karen.
From July 2022, I should have appealed. I had 90 days to appeal from then. I'm perplexed.
If I made the state law on appeals is 90 days from the date of the bill, when the date is first, the bill is first due. So each billing period, there's a 90 day window. So if the bill goes out for October 1, the appeal period will be from October 1, the 90 days.
All right, thank you.
But I believe new notices should go out to the taxpayers that receive erroneous notices. This is horrific. We just can't come up here and say, well, here, you should know better. We're taking your word. You're giving us it in writing, what we should be doing.
I told you, I will check into it. I will call you. I'll let you know.
Yeah, but we need written notice. That, that's important.
Okay.
Because if we're going to take this to court, we're going to need written notice. So that's what I'm asking. The council look into it, and if there was a mistake, what action are you going to take on that party who made the mistake? Because it seems like in this town, there is a lot of mistakes coming from the same office, and it has to stop. There has to be some supervision in the treasurer's office, and there's not.
Richard, we're not going to get into that.
Well, we have to get into it because that is the problem.
I just told you. I will check into it and I will get back to you.
But raising your voice
I'm not raising my voice.
Just told you.
I know. I understand. I think your point's well taken.
Thank you.
Okay, barring no more public comment, item nine, consent items, have a motion?
Pro, move approval.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion on them? Borrowing the discussion, all in favor? Hi, anybody against? Pass this peg. Item 10, appointments, review, discussion and or potential action and or vote. Oh? Okay, go ahead.
P. L. L. Eighteen Pleasant Lane, Belleville. I would just like to speak on behalf of the school department and the lack of funding from you guys, the town council, to our school committee. And the budget that we just voted on on Tuesday night is an absolute disgrace. And we as a town and the school department, school committee should be ashamed. I'm going to tell you what other communities around us are being funded at. There is a 4% cap from the state. Towns around us like Barville at 3.2, North Smithfield 3.9. Towns around us like Barville at 3.2, North Smithfield 3.9, Ponte Gans at 3, Charahoe 3.7, Newport Middletown East, Greenwich North, Kingstown 4%. With the $190,000 that you guys asked us to take away from the school department's budget on Tuesday. We are now going to be funding our schools at 1.75%. That is an embarrassment. It is disrespectful to our teachers and our students, and it is quite unconscionable.
Can I comment on that, ma'am? Or you wanna finish? How you doing?
Just, you know, it is, it is really difficult to see every month. Stephanie at the school department has been running a, a complete budget. We have, we have had our numbers so good, and it is embarrassing as a teacher of 26 years to know that we are not, we are not funding our schools properly. The principal at Hope, who now has to get rid of, yet again, two more classrooms, two more teachers, was saying that her cafeteria tables are like falling apart. She's like, forget about the fact that like, I don't even have tables. Like, I, I just need tables. It is, it is completely impossible to it is where we have fully up calling for us for asking for us to, a motion to pause and to not vote on the budget on Tuesday. But the pressure that the school committee was on, they weren't listening to the parents. We need, as the town council and the school committee, to work on these budgets. We can't run our schools on 1.75%. I, I just, I don't understand. I'm heartbroken. We have a blue ribbon in this town. You want RICAS scores to be good? You want people to move to situat? We can't do that if we have to get rid of the curriculum director that's done an amazing job and get rid of the math interventionist because our RICAS scores down in Hope are so low. I, I just, I don't understand what's going on. And I just, I, I, I just want it known. Like, I want it out there. Parents don't even know about where the funding's really lacking. The school committee should not have voted on that budget on Tuesday night. It is, to me, abhorrent. It's just, it's embarrassing.
Okay, thank you.
So what are we gonna do?
We're gonna vote on it after. It's on the agenda.
Well, I, I implore you all to go walk into a school, to go talk to a principal, to go talk to the teachers, and to do some research. I don't think there's any town in this state that is funding a school at 1.75%. We should be embarrassed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, item 11. Oh, excuse me, item 10, electrical inspector. Um, Mike Pealucci, am I saying it right? Pealucci. He was here? Well, you're recommending him, right? Okay, so you have a motion, we'll hire him?
Motion to, uh, hire Michael.
Motion made second. Any discussion on it? You wanna say anything, Mike? No?
Uh, Mike's been an alternate for the town for quite some time. Um, he's also the electrical inspector over in Foster and covers over in a couple of the municipalities. Um, he's run his own business for 30 years. Um, super knowledgeable guy and, um, hi- highly recommended from multiple municipalities, including myself, so.
Hey, thank you. Uh, no other discussion, all in favor? Aye, anybody against? It passes. Item 11, resolutions, review, discussion, and/or potential action, and/or vote. Item A is resolution for a tax anticipation note to be approved by qualified voters at the town financial meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion on it?
I'm sorry, um, there's an error at the top. It says 2024. It needs to be fixed.
What on?
Held on June 2024, 7:00 PM.
On the resolution?
The title, yeah.
Not the one I got in front of me. It says 2503.
When, when, no. Well, I have 2504 as the number of the resolution, but I'm reading resolution for presentation at the financial town meeting to be held on June blank 2024 at 7:00 PM. That's what, that's what was posted online. I don't know if it's corrected since subsequent to that. It may have been corrected. I don't know.
Yeah, it must.
It's been fixed. Okay, thank you. This is the one that was online, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it's accurate. Um, I'm a little confused, um, as to the purpose, well, not really the purpose, but the genesis of this order, uh, this resolution. Pete, can you explain where did this come from? And, and, and for the benefit of the voters?
Michael, we always do tax anticipation notes. The council approves it first.
I might be on the wrong resolution. I'm sorry. I was on the, uh...
But that's not up yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
But tax anticipation notes are, okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion? Barring the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? It passes. Item B, resolution related to the use of budget line items and funds during the fiscal year to be approved by qualified voters at the town financial meeting. Dave, you wanna explain this?
Yeah, uh, I'm David Farrar. I'm the Towns Bond Council.
All right, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to get this discussion going.
I have a second? Motion made second. Open for discussion, why Dave?
Okay, yeah. Mr. Marcello is correct. The genesis of this motion was a motion that Mr. Finnegan made from the floor last year when I was here with the restriction of line items. Some of the wording and air are, are defined terms, um, that have been used in a different way by our auditors. And also, the, in, in my view, the, in my view, the, the, the exact wording could have led to the exhaustion of the fund balance. So this resolution clarifies that. It sets forth the terms in the audit and what the auditors mean by certain words like restricted, and we put it on to say, boom, there. And, and also the, the actual verbal motion made and amended at the financial town meeting was not reflected verbatim in the recorded minutes. So this, I went back and watched the meeting, which I was at twice. And this says, recounts those in except in cases of declared emergency, which was verbally made by the moderator, with Mr. Finnegan's agreement, all municipal accounts slash line items, and it identifies what a line item is. As set forth in the current, in the 2526 budget, and fund balances shall only be used for their intended purpose within that account line item, which was the proposal from the floor, that no transfers over 10,000 are authorized of any, out of any account or line item or fund balances except to other municipal accounts, line item, or fund balances as applicable, and then only by a vote of the town council. And I go on to say the 10,000 limitation applies per line item in the aggregate per year. And further, that no more than 200,000 in the aggregate in the fiscal year of the unassigned fund bal- balance in the general fund can be made even by a vote of the town council without the approval at a financial town meeting or a special financial town meeting.
So David, if I could, just, so ba- basically, we can move $10,000 from one line item in a building officials budget, for example, to another with a council vote. And meant, and this gets to the whole concept of, you know, enhanced transparency of moving monies.
But it, 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 say, and it, within a particular line item in the budget, say, public works that, that transfers can be made among the public work line item, uh, the public works account. Any transfer above 10,000 outside of public works would require a vote of the town council. What I was most concerned about was, um, the way it was written. It would have allowed the council, and, and this question for the financial advisor and the rating agency, was that it would allow the exhaustion of the fund balance, the unassigned fund balance.
Right, but I, but I, I think the, the big thing that was being sought here is transparency, that basically you can see that, you know, council's moving money. And, and that's achieved with this. The, the $200,000 is something new, but this is kind of cleaning up the vote from last year's FTM. Is that right?
Yes, it is. And the genesis of latter limit was after being viewed by our financial advisor, who handles the town's bond ratings, that it was felt that any, um, use of the fund balance beyond 200,000, even in declared emergency, would, 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 would would impinge our reserves.
Yep, okay.
Thank, thank you for that explanation. I'm sorry. So if it's less than $200,000, use of the fund balance, how is that authorized? Can the treasurer?
Vote of the town council. Use of, fund balance has been used by the past in this town. Fund balance has been, unassigned fund balance has been used and appropriated by the council in this town from time to time.
In, in the budget?
Outside of the budget.
So if we have a line item in the budget that says, you know, we're counting on revenues, I'm making this number up, $500,000, it, it just, it's from the current budget. And, and maybe that could help me out if there's a, a, an unassigned fund balance used for revenues in the current budget. That number is X, you know, $100, $100,000. That's approved by the voters of the financial town meeting. That's part of the revenue. That's part of, that helps balance the budget.
Yes.
Out, i- if this resolution passes, would this mean that the town, that, that the town council could, uh, uh, an amount less than $200,000, they could just dip into that and, and use it as they want?
No, that means that the, if a project were undertaken and there was a shortfall and you needed one from unassigned fund balance not arising in the budget, that any, that this was capped, the way it was written would have used, allowed any use of the fund balance, even to the point of exhaustion.
But we've never had this before, that I'm, uh, uh, other...
Because we thought it was, we now thought that condition was prudent because if you're going to, that resolution was only good for that fiscal year.
Correct.
This resolution should be, if you're interested, renewed every fiscal year.
No, I understand that.
And there was a lack of clarity over what it meant. It also used words that the auditor mean, takes to mean a different meaning.
So I just wanted to clarify this because I brought this up last time. The town council budget's $100,000 in this current budget or next fiscal year of a fund balance. That's part, that's what the voters approve. Prior to the passage of this resolution, did anybody have the authority to go into the fund balance and just use it?
Well, it's been done.
It has been done.
I, I did, I, I, I'm not saying it was, it was, it, it, it should have been done.
Right, I'm, I'm not asking.
I'm saying it has been.
It has been done in the past. Without a vote of the council.
No, with a vote of the council, probably.
Probably, but I, I've never, are you aware of any, is the council aware of entering fund balance without a vote? With, with the vote of the council? I, I've, I've been there for 10 years. I don't remember taking a vote.
Oh, we've had votes. Since I've been on the council, we've had votes and done it.
I'm thinking like settlements and things like that, you know, it's probably, I would think like settlements and things like that.
But you're voting to approve a settlement. You're not saying to get the money from fund balance, right? That's, you're just voting to approve a settlement. So there's never, and I'll go through the minutes because it should be reflected in the minutes, right? So without a vote of the council, we've been allowed to go into the fund balance. And by the way, I support this resolution. I just want to be clarified though, because I think it's important to clarify. So...
That would be, that would be a specific, uh, use, what you just, I, I, like a settlement that went beyond 200,000.
Right, so then it would be a vote of the council saying we're gonna settle this.
We're saying that, I, I'm sorry, it is being suggested upon the advice of the financial advisor that you not go beyond 200,000
Correct.
because of your level of reserves without a vote of a special or, or the FTM.
So I'll, I'll make a public records request. I'm sure I'll get it for any type of, the, type of dip into the fund balance with, with a council approval that was made prior to the passage of this resolution within the three years. I don't think there has been.
Yeah.
And if, and that, I have a problem with that, but that's another issue. What if it's less than $200,000? That, who, who has the authority to make that appropriation under this?
The council. Who selected 200,000 that was done on the advice of the financial advisor?
No, no, I, I think, I'm just, maybe the, maybe not reading the language correctly. Provided for that, that no use of more than $200,000 in the aggregate in the fiscal year of the unassigned balance in the general fund shall be made even by a vote of the town council without the approval at the financial town meeting. So that says if you're gonna go over 200,000, you gotta go to the, you gotta go to the council with the vote, with, with the voters' approval. If it's less than $200,000, who makes that decision?
The council.
All right, it doesn't really say that. It, it's it says no use of more than 200,000 in the aggregate. It doesn't say less than $200,000, you have to go to the council. I think that needs to be clarified. We can, we can take care of this at the financial town meeting, I guess, but it does.
The resolution was read. I tried to follow the exact wording, regardless it was unclear. It says no transfers over 10,000 are authorized out of any account or of fund balances, except to other fund council or fund balances, and then only by a vote of the council.
So, so you, because of that provision, you believe that $10,000?
If it's under 10,000, it doesn't need to go to the council, although it probably has. If it's from 10 to 200.
Goes to the council.
Goes to the council.
Because of that provision you just read.
If it's over 200, we need a special financial town meeting.
All right, so under $10,000, who makes that decision? Who, who would have the authority to, to, to spend 10,000? Just, I'm, I'm concerned about the fund balance.
Whoever administers the funds within a particular municipal account, fund balance.
Fund balance, yeah. Under $10,000, who would make that?
Presumably, if, if, if something is being used under fund balance, it's either for a contract or an appropriation or whatever, or a use that the council has approved.
What if it's not? What if it's not?
Well, I, no uses of the town's money are, are, unless it's with, say it's within a departmental budget. If, if, if they're short $100 out of, out of, of supplies and you're putting it into, I don't know, salary or, or benefits or whatever, that would be permitted.
And who would make that decision, I guess I'm asking?
Whoever's in charge of the, the administration.
So that, so I, so that kind of makes me a little concerned, right? So we're gonna allow, and, and $10,000 is not a lot, but I, I, if, if you're gonna allow that, then I would hope there would be at least a reporting requirement that use of the fund balance under, under $10,000, either by the department head or the treasurer's office should report to the town council that they've made this, they made this expenditure without their approval.
You gave last, huh? That was what was voted last year.
What was voted last year? I wa- I wasn't at the meeting. I only missed two in my entire, I wasn't at the last one. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It, it went on for a while. It, it was, it was allowed that the, they wanted town council approval of amounts over 10,000. I made it in the aggregate because then you could keep 9,000, 1,000, 5,000, whatever. So I, I tried to follow the spirit of the resolution. It never said, was not clear who did it under. I'm not administrator of the town. I, it was never.
We don't have an administrator. That's one of the issues.
Well, hey, you know, hey, I don't, I only wanted to pinges on the bond rating. Do I get involved? And that's why I'm involved.
I appreciate what you're trying to do. I just have, and of course, this is a, this is a clean slate, so we can write this any way we want. But under $10,000, if I read this correctly, someone could use, could dip into the fund balance for appropriation under $10,000. No one would know about it other, other than the person who did it, apparently. So I think as a safety mechanism, you should be, you should, it should be reported somewhere. Right? I, I'm not saying you have to get approval, but it should, you know, again, it's not a lot of money. But if you have every department head or the treasurer's office making 10, $10,000, uh, dipping into the fund balance, that's $100,000. So...
Uh, I certainly would never assume that a department manager would be able to dip into the fund balance.
That's my question.
And I don't disagree with you, but the town council gets monthly financial reports, and if they saw, or they wouldn't. I don't have to disagree that perhaps we should target their, um, view on that particular transaction. I would not oppose that, but we assume that they're reading the financial reports and they would see that.
So you're telling me that when an, uh, an, uh, authorization of $10,000 or less, appropriation from the fund balance, who, you said it wouldn't be the department, says who would make it? Would it be your office?
Ultimately, it would be my office if the town council doesn't, doesn't make the decision.
Okay.
Within, below the $10,000.
Anything below. So in the last, before this resolution passed last year, has the town treasurer's office dipped into the fund balance for under $10,000?
The only time that, um, I don't get the dates perfectly sampled was if they The only time that um I don't get the dates perfectly sampled was if they decide to settle legal legal um claim.
Well, that's different. They've they've approved.
Not different, Michael, because it's not in the budget.
Let me ask.
In in those instances and in those instances, we now are specifically stating that they're limited to a two hundred thousand dollar uh settlement. If they can't find the two hundred thousand dollars within the amount of money that's budgeted within the annual appropriation.
We don't budget for settlements. We know that. We don't.
No, but but if they finally they're able to get it somewhere theoretically, they could.
But but that I can trace back to a vote of the council.
Yeah, but but let me ask you this. I mean, if you think about it, fund balance is kind of a roll up of everything, right? So if if Kirk goes over in a hard winter, I'm just thinking out loud, you know, and and has to put, you know, a hundred another fifty thousand dollars in salt down and he blows his budget. He doesn't reach into the fund balance for that. That just gets either offset at the end of the year by some other thing.
Right, you true up at the end of the year.
Yeah, you true up at the end of the year. So that's when, you know, I think the only time you'd be hitting fund balances with a big legal settlement, which you didn't you know, it'd be a big item coming to the town. Do you know what I'm saying? I I think that'd be the only time we'd be doing it.
I'm concerned that that we there should be a I don't care. I mean, maybe you disagree that we have a policy disagreement, but I believe that there should be some formal notification. He he just indicated that it wouldn't be a department head who could do it. So I guess it's just his office that could do it. Or it would be the council would vote of the council. But if you are going to the fund balance for less than ten thousand dollars, which you don't need council approval, I think that you would want that reported to you that that has occurred and this resolution does not have such a reporting mechanism.
But if we were to, you know, to carry this forward, let's assume we're in the midst of a fiscal year and and using Mr. McCormick's uh situation. Let's assume we have a brutal winter and we know we're going to blow the budget and we don't. We know that there's insufficient positive variances in the other departments. And at that point in time, I would feel that the town council would necessarily have to say, okay, you know, we're in a tough fiscal year. We don't have adequate funding. We authorize the use of fund balance to cover that deficit in that particular county.
That's a formal vote, but again.
That 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 would be a formal vote.
I'm asking the situation where there's not a formal vote. That's what I'm saying. You that comes before you is very.
But I can't imagine where any department head tended.
Department head could not tip in.
No, there's no way they're going to.
Absolutely not.
No, definitely not.
Doesn't say that. I mean, it's it's the mechanism. It's the reporting, who has the authority, how it's done.
I I think there's nothing wrong with a notification that if you have an extraordinary event that that would suggest there's at risk of hitting fund balance. You come back to the council and let them know.
Well, also, let's take it that you you on a monthly basis get your your financial reports. If if uh the variance starts to materialize because of a harsh winter or some other event, then it would necessitate a conversation at the town council level to say, how are we going to cover that?
Sorry, that's an aggregate number. They're just looking at fund balances as X. It doesn't tell you where it went, who did it, why it was done.
But you would see a variance in that account.
All right, so. Okay, I mean.
And and again, you don't really you wouldn't really see a fun balance use until you decided that there weren't other offsetting items in the budget. Do you know what I mean? That's.
So suppose they had a tough winter, right?
Yeah.
No. Do you mind if I address that? I I think the ten thousand, I think the spirit of the ten thousand was for interdepartment transfers.
Intra.
Intra, excuse me, with D P W to D P W. I don't think it had anything to do with using fund balance at all.
Well, that's not what that.
I know, I know. I'm trying to clarify. I think that ten thousand number has nothing to do with.
Right, but so and and I again, I wasn't at the meeting, but I understand that that was the intent. So if you wanted to spend money within line items within a department, you had to come to the council. I get that. But the the way my brother just read it is that he's even even includes use of fund balance and that's for a department that's extra department, right? So like that, we need to clarify that. So I I I think I've made my point. I I I hope that yeah, this is cleaned up. Not only the date change, but maybe we can have a bit of a better reporting requirement before the next financial meeting. Again, it's all about transparency. This is a uh, you know, communities. There are some communities that any any transfer between departments, no matter what the amount is, needs to be approved by the council. Even those 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 communities that have either a town manager, well, I can only talk to town administrator. But I mean, that is very transparent. I work for a community where if you if you need fifty dollars for an account, you put it on the council agenda and they vote for it. You can't get any more transparent than that. And they tell you the account numbers. We don't do that in this town. This is is a step in the right direction. I'm not criticizing it, but I think there is a that the ten thousand dollars or less is concerning to me. And I think there should be a reporting required specifically what the councilman just said, because this includes fund balance, which is interdepartment, not intradepartment. Thank you.
Good. Richard Finnegan, Ridge Road. I I appreciate you putting this on the agenda. I object to the structure of this, the way it's structured. We have two separate and independent fiscal policies, one the ten thousand intra department and the other, the two hundred thousand, the the general fund fund balance. They need to be separated. Can't be in the same resolution. And if you do, you have a chance of um lo- losing on both of them. If you don't if you don't separate them. So I I would ask bond council to separate them. And I think it's very, very important. And I I don't think this resolution does say that you need council approval for dip it into the fund balance. I I I think with the fund balance, we need council approval. And that should be done at a public meeting. And that's why my vote for the ten thousand limitation was into intra department, that's that's okay, because that's your budget. You can do what you want with your budget. But this going into the fund balance, that's concerning and and that that will lead to fiscal problems down the road. And I would I would hope you separate these two and come to the financial town meeting with a new resolution. I wouldn't pass this resolution tonight. Now, actually not to pass it, because if you do pass it, I think it has a tremendous um chance of failing. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else have anything? All right, spin a motion, a second. No more discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
Oh, we're going to prove it as is, not rewritten? I I thought we just made the decision that we were going to rewrite that, you know, or we just discussed that.
Yeah, you can rewrite it.
Well, because I I I mean, I agree with, you know, Jason and spelled it out pretty clearly. Um, it was that ten thousand dollars was into department, but there was nothing. I don't remember anything about the fund balance in that.
That was in the words of the the minutes.
I I don't I don't I don't recall that at all.
Was is the council's preference that I said say it takes the fund balance question separately from it and say.
I I think we need I think I think Mr. Marcelo's. I'm sorry. I don't mean to talk over you. Um, I I think Mr. Marcelo's right. I think these are two separate resolutions. Do you not agree or?
Well, they were all collapsed into one last time. I'm trying to I'm not trying to.
Maybe not the best thing.
New, but I can do it in in in. I can do if you want me to split that into separate resolutions.
Yeah.
I I will.
Uh, I I think.
Resolution A and B if you wish.
Yeah, I think direction would be like that where A would be ten thousand in intra department transfers are at the discretion of the department head. And then any use of surplus or any use of fund balance, ten thousand to not one nine 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 comes to the council. And anything over two hundred thousand, just basically just how it reads, except separating out the ten thousand from anything to do with fund balance, because I guess anything, if we used one dollar of fund balance outside of a budget cycle, it would come to us, wouldn't it? Whether that's a settlement for a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Or whether it some other thing comes to us, it would from zero to two hundred would always come to the council in my mind.
So in in my it so my interpretation was that it was every account. It wasn't just the fund balance. It was every account that we have. Any transfers over ten thousand dollars needed to come to the council.
If they were.
Yeah, I think so.
Inter if they were outs from department to other department.
That's the way it is here.
Yeah.
Up to two hundred thousand dollars. The reason I asked in the first place to have this done was I had talked to Stephanie and the superintendent. And we were talking about the budget because we know we're under the gun because we've got a four percent cap. We don't want to have to lay off police officers or anything else like that. So I was talking to them and the unfended mandates that they've had about bussing and everything like that, five hundred thousand dollars, whatever it was, it was a concern. And well, and then she turns around and she says to me, she says, the real problem I'm going to have in the future is what am I going to do if I get two special education kids? It's going to blow my budget right out of the water. But then I talked to Ted and I said, Ted, how do we handle that? And he said, the only way we could do it was we would have to dip into fund balance. But because of last year with Mr. Finnegan's motion like that, we'd have to have a special F T M. So that's where this come about. So that's that's where we are. And and I agree, it should come back to the the council, ten thousand to two hundred thousand. If it's going to be anything with the fund balance, it should come back to the council for authorization.
And it doesn't hurt to be.
We're responsible.
And it doesn't hurt to be really explicit about that, too, in the language.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
Could we clarify one thing? From one dollar to two hundred thousand should come back to the council. The ten thousand discretion between line items within the department should be at the discretion of the the department head.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And perhaps I think in the past, any movement between departments perhaps should come back to the council. So, you know, do it that way. And David, I'm sorry, I we did the best we could based on that, but it's it's.
Well, it's my fault too, because I came to you last minute.
Pass it, David, on the further.
So so I would know that a resolution be with that called use of fund balance to say that I no more. The town council may use up to two hundred thousand in the aggregate in the fiscal year of the unassigned fund balance by its by its votes. That and and any use above two hundred thousand in the aggregate of unassigned balance in the general fund shall be submitted to the a fine the financial town meeting or special financial.
Right. And then up to ten thousand dollars, if it's inter, a department head can do it.
And.
And if it's going to be from one department to another, it has to come to the council.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Count, oh, hold on. Mr. Council President, I I hate to be the fly in the ointment, but procedurally, we did just take a vote that passed, so we would need to do them at. Oh, there was a majority that said yes. There there was there was a majority that said yes.
To just undo it.
So I'm just saying we need a motion to reconsider to undo that and then have a new motion to pass it as proposed to be amended.
You have a vote on it though.
You you did.
We did.
You did. We did. And Terry.
Okay.
Terry had her name at the.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to reconsider second.
Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, new motion.
I make a motion to approve this in two sections, one addressing intra and interdepartment transfers separate from use of fund balance.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion?
Should add, as discussed at.
Would we be specific to the amounts so there's no confusion?
Um, ten thousand. Ten thousand for intra department, anything over ten thousand interdepartment to the council. And then any use of fund balance would come to the council. Up to two hundred and obviously over two hundred would go to.
Financial town meeting.
Yeah, we'll go to the voters.
Special meeting.
Okay, all a favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? It's all set. Item C, resolution related to the issuance issuance of not more than two million twenty five thousand dollars of bonds to finance the town's portion of the cost of a new fire station on land exchange swapped uh purchased and or leased or otherwise acquired or made available to the town from the Providence Water Supply Board to be approved by qualified voters at the town meeting.
Mr. President.
Okay. This came about because the uh the grant writer called me and said she wanted to put into, I believe it was governor, I mean, excuse me, Senator Reed's office for uh, I believe it was a three million or five million dollar.
Yeah.
Uh, grant. And if we do that, we have to put the um, we have to have a matching, right? I believe it was forty five percent, which is two million dollars. Um, so we have to put it in front of the voters to see if they would be willing to do that. This this isn't going to happen for even if it goes forward for a couple of years. But we have the step we have to do now is to try to get it approved that we would do it in the future if we get approved for the grant. So that's why this is all about. Jay, I want to talk about it for a second.
Yes, just for clarification, um, nothing has been awarded. We are working on several different grant avenues um to fund the construction of two fire stations in town. One of the grant applications requires a forty five percent match from the town. Should that be awarded in the future, we would have to act relatively quick to make sure those funds were available. One of the components when you're applying for the grants is to show that you actually have the support of the community to fund this grant if we were awarded. Um, the cost of building a new fire station is approximately four and a half to five million dollars. The both of the grant acquisitions we're we're pursuing, one of them does not have a match, the other one does. Um, or one of them has a much smaller match. But in either case, they both require language that says the town will support this before you can move forward in the process. And that's where and and the same goes with the land. We're in talks about the land, but nothing has been acquired yet.
I mean, the way I view this is we've we are blessed in town to have two or four active and very committed volunteer fire departments. And, uh, you know, two of the stations are in disrepair and eventually have to be replaced. And it's that's that date's coming sooner rather than later, and we've known it for some period of time. Uh, and it's it would be irresponsible to put them on the same footprints that they're on today. One's fallen into the reservoir, the other one's in a flood zone. Uh, so that's thus the uh the land swap negotiations. Once that's nailed down, which hopefully it is, we can pursue these grant opportunities to try to get some federal funding in here to get two new fire departments. That's that's the net of it.
So I think it's a great idea that we swap the land out, but I am still concerned that we do have one fire station that's on leased land.
What's that again?
Poterville is still on leased land is if I if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it is. It's it's town owned and it's leased land. Those dropped mist.
Oh, so it's town owned. It's not Poterville's.
The town owns those two.
Town owns the buildings.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And the other two stations over a hundred years.
But I thought Poterville was.
One's a hundred and twenty five years old. The other's actually a little more than that.
Okay.
That's pretty close to it.
Chief, my problem with this is right now is that uh two million um is forty five percent of today's building costs. So when we don't have forty five percent, when the grants come in in a year or two or three, um, now what do we do?
Yeah, well, we're coming as close as we can, so we don't know when this grant opportunity will actually come to fruition. We're going through the process. We and and the way the um the federal government's working right now, there's been some holdups on some of the processes with some of those grants. So this grant could be awarded the beginning of next year, even late fall of this year or into next year. There's just no way of giving you a good estimate. I'd have to say, you know, six million dollars was evident, which is potentially way more than what we should be suggesting. So, yeah, I don't have a really good recipe for that. We've looked at it in all different angles and our our belief is that if we're in the ballpark of four and a half to five million dollars, we should have, and that's considering that there's no cost for the land that we should be in pretty good shape.
And oh, again, to.
But it is an estimate. It's not exact.
Yeah, to restate it is is that if it takes a couple of years, with the way buildings, building material has been going up, um, if we're not at forty five percent, then we have to have another bond and another vote and another financial town meeting.
But up to up to two million dollars, we couldn't issue the bonds until we come to the council and you would evaluate the project and say, okay, we have adequate funding.
I understand that, but I mean, we still have to go back to the 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 voters.
Absolutely.
And ask for an increase above the two million to now get to the forty five percent.
Absolutely, if that's the case.
But this is a this is a start.
Forty five percent of the grant. It's not forty five percent of the cost of the station.
And this and this is a start. We need to have a starting point.
This was an effort. I was asked in concert with bond council to be ready to pivot quickly if we're awarded the grant. So based on the very best construction estimates that we have, this would satisfy us. If this two million dollars doesn't get us there, it's it's your fiduciary responsibility to say, stop, we need more money. We've got to go to the voters and ask for additional borrowing capacity.
Let me I just got to say, though, if we don't do this, we're not even eligible for a three millions dollars in grant money. So it's like if we don't if we don't say we're willing to do this, we don't even have a bite at the three million apple.
Willing and ready.
To do this.
So we have to do this.
Willing and ready.
Willing.
Willing and ready, we, we, if you approve this-
This would make us both, if it passes. If it doesn't pass, then it doesn't pass.
So if we dial this back, the last time this happened, we lost out on a grant because we didn't have anything like this and we didn't have the land.
Yeah.
That's why we thought it was a reasonable number that would make us-
We have to start somewhere.
Commitment and that we were willing to move forward on it. Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah?
You got it. Thanks, um, so just to clarify, the land that would be used would be coming from Providence Water Supply?
Potentially. We're in the, we're in conversations with the city um, and have been over the past several months to acquire a couple of parcels of land from the city in a land swap deal.
Okay, because I think this is something too where, um, obviously you might want to, um, liaise with the land trust. Um, perhaps? I'm not, I'm not sure what you said. I did. Um, so it might be something where if you move forward with this, you might want to liaise with the land trust? And the, the town's land trust?
This is, well, we're looking at properties that are already owned-
Owned by the town.
Parts that are owned by the town, not in use by the town.
And not, not necessarily-
Not any recreational or parts of their trail systems? No, no. No.
May I make a, oh, I'm sorry.
Thomas Gallagher and Pine Hill Road. Can you tell me what the land is that you want to swap? Is it Punningansett Road?
No, it's not.
No.
Nothing up in that area?
No.
No.
All right. This says one fire station, right? Now we're talking two, am I correct?
That's, the second one's a different grant.
You're going for two grants?
We're, we're going for multiple grants, uh, and to see what we can get.
I have a question.
Yep.
When, uh, Mr. Caleri was here, he had gave us a talk about the fire stations maybe four months ago. He said they were offered a building for free over where the state plays are. And they turned it down. Was the council aware of that? Do you recall him saying that?
No, I don't.
No, no.
Well, he did. And I'm curious, here are two big barracks at the start of the state place. He said they were offered one of them when the, the, uh, military moved out and they turned it down. You know anything about that, chief?
Um, well, I do know that some of those buildings were offered up, they're used, they're in utility, excuse me, they're being used by REAM, Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency. Um, the issue with those buildings are, though, the land may be fine, but the buildings don't even meet fire code themselves. So they may have to move out of them. They, they actually have to be torn down and rebuilt. They're, they're, they're garages, there's a simple garage.
We get the land for nothing, correct?
But that's also what we're looking to do. Yes, we're, we're not looking to pay for land anywhere.
The land across the street from that was given to us by the state or an island, am I right?
No, that was under, ultimately we went into a long-term lease, we didn't get that land.
I thought it was given to us.
No.
The DM was gonna do it, then they found out they couldn't.
Yes, we had to go into like a ninety-nine year lease on it.
Right, has that been considered to, uh, see if we could get some of that? See, I don't like the Providence Water Board. They're not good neighbors. They're the richest company in the state. They have no competition and they charge us fifty-six hundred dollars a year rent for North Citywood Fire Station, which is very important to not only the community, to their buildings. And I don't trust them. And, uh, I think we kind of bowed down to them, at least the council does, I know. Thank you.
Thank you. No other discussion? Okay, barring no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
To your point, if you were dependent, if the, if the two million twenty-five thousand is forty-five percent of four and a half million, if the chief is now saying four and a half to five million, perhaps you'd want to increase that, that, that figure to two million two fifty or two million and a half, I, to make sure, you know, there's no uh, ineligibility for the grant because you don't have forty-five percent of the, the, the full forty-five percent of the cost.
Well, what's the, uh, a grant number? What, what does she put it in for, do you know, Chuck?
No, she told me approximately four and a half million.
You really need a little wiggle from-
Why don't we say up to, just say, you know, up to?
Up to, up to, up to two point five.
Yeah, up to two point five, uh, yep, I think it makes sense.
So the motion would be to approve with the amendment of an amount not more than two and a half million.
Yeah.
You fine with that?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
So moved.
Okay. We have a second, right?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any against? It's all set, Peg. Item D, resolution relating to the Second Amendment in Citywood.
Okay, somebody do it.
Well, second.
Motion made and seconded, open it up for discussion?
Um, I have something to say, um, I read this bill, um. I do share the concerns of other people that this is really pressing against the Second Amendment. Um, but the bill has been put, uh, sent back to committee for further study, which if you read between the lines means it's dead right now, but that doesn't mean we can't go forward with it, but, uh, currently that's, that's its status.
That's good to know. Do we have any other discussion? Barring no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Passes Peg unanimously. Item E, resolution related to legal authorization to add a third Class A liquor license.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Ralph Grove, Seven Howard Avenue. I think it's a great idea to go forward with this. Uh, my only question that I have is hypothetically, if we were to get that third license, is it possible to map the areas where the licenses would be restricted? Like one in North Citywood, one in Chotmists, one in Hope. Um, for further down the line years to come, that you don't end up with three liquor stores in North Citywood or Chotmists or something? Hopefully would alleviate that problem. You know, we're stuck with that pond in the middle of our town, so kind of unique to other areas. My only comment, thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Barring no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? It's all set. Item twelve, town business, review discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. A recommendation for Public Works Director Loizel to award the bid for truck engine repair for two thousand twelve Ford F five fifty to Flood Ford EG, bids received from him, uh, twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
Move approval, second.
Motion made and seconded, we have a discussion on it?
That's to purchase a new vehicle?
No.
No, it's to fix a motor in a vehicle we have.
Thank you.
Okay, barring no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? It's all set, Peg. Item B, authorization for SRO, Richard Ferenti to attend the annual NASRO conference in Texas during the week of July sixth, twenty twenty-five to accept the twenty twenty-five National Model Agency Award. The conference registration fee is waived, travel expense not to exceed two thousand four hundred dollars.
Approval, second.
Motion made and seconded, we have a discussion on that? Barring no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? It's all set, Peg. Item C, draft budget recommended by the Budget Committee. Adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Said budget to be presented to the qualified voters at the financial town meeting on June third, twenty twenty-five.
Move approval, second.
Discussion?
I, I just wanted to say, I mean, this, this budget process was unbelievably hard where everybody had to share and taken some cuts. And we're still at a maximum tax increase, and I don't think anybody on this, this table or this, this, uh, committee here wants to present to our voters maximum tax increases. I know I certainly don't, but I just, I just, we're in a real hard spot this year to try to get where everybody's happy with what we're doing. And I don't think anybody's gonna end up being happy with this. But the, the other side of that is we're already at a maximum tax increase. We can't do anything else legally. So I just wanted to make that point, you know, to say that, because it's not like we can do anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do, but we didn't have the state unfunded mandates that we have now. Five hundred and some thousand dollars for buses and stuff like that. And Peg's working on it now, I can tell you that.
Actually, the treasurer's office takes care of it now. So the treasurer's office takes care of doing the budget brochure. So I don't know when the estimated date is.
Um, well, the process is, it has to go to the state, the budget, right, to get accepted. And once it's- I know.
I, I'd also like, um, you know, if, if you could email me the, a ton. I don't know why it's not working. Is it not working?
It is.
Oh, so if you could email me the backup for all of these line items to Karen, I, I didn't, I didn't get the total backup on that. If you could just email that me, to me tomorrow, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Council President, just briefly, point of clarification, the agenda does say twenty-four, twenty-five, it should say twenty-four, twenty-six budget. Twenty-five, twenty-six, excuse me.
Twenty-six, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I stand corrected on that, that's what the agenda says.
I'm glad I don't do the agenda anymore. Do we need to amend?
My, uh, motion.
Thank you.
I'll amend my second.
Thank you. Bye, Richard.
Richard Finnegan, what, what percentage of the town budget is the schools getting in the town, municipality receiving? You must have that.
Karen?
So of the total town budget, the school budget is about sixty percent, I believe? I can calculate it for you.
My only point here, again, it's going down. Ten years ago, sixty-five percent. Each and every year, it keeps going down. How far do you want to go? You, you have to start looking at this and stop taking away from the schools. Unless you want to start closing schools, and then we'll have more money. Tough decisions may need to be made. Nobody wants to do that, so if you don't do that, you should at least give them their percentage of the town budget. You can't keep going down. This is unconscionable.
So, uh, Mr. Finnegan, we presented to them ninety-nine point zero zero two percent of what they asked for. That's what we gave them, ninety-nine point zero zero two percent. Point zero zero eight percent is what was held back from what they asked for.
And there's no other place you can cut in the town budget to give them more money. Town employees in the town hall already know what they're gonna get, two percent raise. It's in the budget. Let's talk about the highway. Three percent for the workers, that's not management. Look at your budget. Twelve percent for management. Non-yun. Police Department, three point five percent. Thank God, we, now we have women in the police department, and I thanked the chief tonight. Our new officer, Colinda, is it? Castelli. Um, my wife and I were walking down Trim Town Road, car went speeding by. She immediately turned around and went after the perpetrator, came back and made sure we were okay. I appreciate that, and, and I think they deserve more. I think all town employees deserve more. But we can't keep taking from the schools and we have to be fair to our female employees at the town hall. They're the low hanging fruit. It's discriminatory. And you need to stop this, you need, you need to fund their salary increases as you fund the male-dominated departments in this town. It, it's been going on year after year after, and I'm not, I'm not gonna stop. I'm gonna keep coming up here and I'm gonna keep complaining. Thank you.
Okay.
Cake globally, Lowell, Eighteen Pleasant Lane, Clayville. I don't really understand, sir, what you're saying if the school committee is asking us to cut our budget by three hundred and fifty thousand a month ago, and then on Tuesday night, we had to cut another hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
No, that's not what happened.
They, uh, the original ask was three hundred and fifty-four thousand, I believe, or something like that. Right, and, and so that was reversed at the next budget meeting. That was reversed and it was a hundred and, it's now what, a hundred and ninety? Right, exactly.
Correct.
And, and we don't want to cut anything from those budgets. We know how hard Stephanie and the, and the superintendent and, and the, and the school committee, they have been working tirelessly, trying to get this together. And we don't want to cut it from anybody, we really, really don't, but we don't want to tax everybody to death either. But there's a lot of hard decisions that have to be made in this town, and we've, we've come up with a few solutions on how we can generate possibly- We need-
Having cafeteria tables that are falling apart.
We need to generate more revenue in this town. We don't generate enough revenue. It's a bedroom community that doesn't do that, so we're going to look into some avenues on how we do that.
Funding the schools at a one point seven six percent increase?
No.
That's what the superintendent Stephanie said Tuesday night.
Up five and a half, six percent. Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Correct, yes. Well, if, I, I honestly, I just, you guys need to talk to the actual educators and the principals putting these lists together and what we're talking about, maybe building new fire stations. Our, our buildings are, like, our funds for our buildings and it's abysmal. Clayville's like, doesn't, the gutters don't work, the basement floods. When, when is this town gonna be funding our schools? Because they're about to all of, like, fall apart. And you keep closing classrooms at home, like, you have any idea what this is doing to the morale of these teachers year after year? Am I gonna lose my job next? People are gonna start leaving this town. You are gonna get parents moving out. So I, I know, I know this is really difficult, the, the budgets and everything we've got going on, but you guys need to get together in a, in a better way because what happened Tuesday night was heartbreaking. You had principals walking out of there in tears. You have teachers so nervous about their jobs and their schools. And parents are, are really, are really disgusted. It's, it's unacceptable. We shouldn't have tables falling apart in classrooms. It's unacceptable. We shouldn't have tables falling apart in classrooms. And that's just, you know, no one talk about RACAS scores going forward, because we won't have math interventionists. We won't have ELA coaches. We won't have Ozzy doing the amazing curriculum things. The town and the school committee need to get things together financially. This is, this is abysmal.
Matthew Allen, one five nine Hope Furnace Road. I just have a question. Once you guys approve the school's budget, even though they presented something to you on each line, and everybody's going to approve it, you're only approving the number, right? So
Bottom line.
The bottom line.
Yeah.
So you can't actually, because I was here last year when we asked for money, and you guys said, it's a business, we give you the money, but we can't force them to hire the other teachers. So once you give them the money, they could actually do whatever they wanted to. They could move their lines around.
Yep. Yep.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that, because it seemed like when we were at the meeting on Tuesday, there was a suggestion made to cut so said teachers from Hope. I should say, cut a teacher, not add another teacher. And there was talk about if we could dive deep down after awarded our, what we were asked to do, that we could finagle a, a number if we needed to still hire. And it was kind of shot down, like, I don't want to put it into people's, like, mouths, but if we do that, then we would be going against what we put in front of you. So I just want to clarify, once whatever bottom dollar you guys give us, well, the school, the school can do whatever they want.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Could we clarify that also with the approval of the Department of Education? So they have to achieve certain objectives that the Department of Education established. They can't just haphazardly move money around. There is some restraints.
Hope's principal had talked to other principals about trying to go back through their budget and say, I'll, I'll make, I don't want to make up numbers, but so if their librarians get two thousand dollars to buy new books, could they get, take five hundred from that from each school to fund something? Or like a supply list? So if you're giving two thousand, I don't, I, again, making numbers up. If their supply list is two thousand, but they only use fifteen hundred, could they move five from this, like, twenty here? Because there was talk of not having certain sports for the high school due to whatever, they didn't really say why. I'm thinking, nobody's signing up for that sport. And just moving slight funds around is what it was about, to fund a teacher.
I, I don't want to get into
That's what I was clarifying.
No, no, and I'm not, I just don't want you to have heightened expectations.
Oh, no, I'm not. I'm just wondering.
But Ted, the clear thing is, the council has no role in that decision. That's the, Matt, that's the clear thing. They don't have to go back to the council to do any of that.
He didn't suggest that. He suggested that, and I don't mean to interrupt you. I was, I was very concerned, because I've been involved in discussions like this. And I want you to understand that, yes, they have some discretion with those variable funds. But there are certain required mandates of the Department of Education state. And they have to achieve those before they can at their discretion move money around. So, yes, but temper that yes with understanding that they have certain mandatory requirements that they have to satisfy.
And I would add to that, that there are lots and lots and lots of mandatory requirements. It's not just a few. They can't say, well, we're not going to teach math at this grade because we want to fund money somewhere else.
No, it was more
They have some wiggle room with their money.
Yeah, it was more
But there's a lot of stuff they have to do by law.
Yes, but it was more about moving, like I said, supplies around. Like, taking a little bit of this supply. Again, it was, we sat there talking about what the cuts would be make to get you the a hundred and ninety thousand dollars less. And one of the things was, if we could move, like I said, supplies, buy a little bit less books for the library or arts supply, like, just wiggle room a little bit from every school, if they were allowed to do it. And I remember last year when we stood at the senior center, you guys said, even if you wanted to give us the money, we, you could not physically tell the school that this two hundred and fifty needs to go to these two teachers to keep them. You said if we did give it to them, they could do whatever they want.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. Your, your question is best proposed to the school committee or the school department.
Oh, no, they already discussed it. I was just clarifying. If, if it could be done, no matter what, whatever the bottom line is, they, you guys, that's where you drive the line. You write the check, and it's on them. So they can't say, well, town council approved this amount for these spots. So, okay, I just want to clarify.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Barring no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? It's all set, Peg. Item D, recommendation from Recreation Director Pono to increase the summer camp program registration fee from two hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, second. A discussion on it?
So Dave, I think I sent your email. I, I meant to send it to you yesterday, and when I opened it up on my computer today, it didn't go to you. I'm so sorry.
And I wanted to just give you all some insight.
Well, yeah, we're looking for information, you know, how many days camp is, you know, you know, some information on it.
To give you an idea of a weekly cost in the state of Rhode Island, so this is what most camps charge weekly, is between five hundred and eighty.
Yeah, we get a little closer to the mic so I can hear.
Yeah, so really, I mean, I guess we want state stuff, but I really want to know in the town of Situate.
Oh, yeah.
How, how much in fees we collected and how, how much expenses we had?
Our average attendance is about one hundred and seventy-five. So it's forty-five thousand, two fifty is what we collected in total.
Is that, that's with the old break?
Correct.
Okay. And how much did it cost us to fund or to run that camp last year?
I'm going to, and I'll get to that.
Thanks.
So we offer thirty-four days. So we're talking seven weeks of camp. And that's why I was kind of giving you an idea of, most of these camps run on a weekly basis, but we run an entire seven weeks for our fee. Rather than being a weekly fee of between five and eight hundred, our neighboring town would charge two fifty per week, seventy-five dollars per day. We're charging currently two hundred and fifty dollars for a seven-week camp. So your fees associated on top of that would be anything to do with onsite performers, onsite activities, bringing a water slide. That's around eleven thousand dollars that we pay out of the budget to support the camp. On top of lifeguard training, medical. We don't charge, we don't get charged for like DEM or someone to come in to do assessments, but just the medical to keep up with the equipment and keep up with the education piece. That's another twenty-five hundred dollars. So the numbers just keep adding up on top of we employ our kids. I mean, it's our high school students that are councils. And obviously, the kids that are coming, the children that come to the camp are our Situate kids. There's a salary that's, that's associated with that. And the minimum wage is going to currently be at fifteen dollars an hour. I mean, it was twelve and change years ago, and it just keeps going up. It's not a lot of, a lot, you know, it's not a big ask to say a hundred dollars more for a seven-week camp. It's not really going to offset the big cost of it, but
What's, what's a workout to an hour that you're, you're charging if you look at
Five dollars. I'm, I'm sorry, a dollar five.
Okay.
Actually, I don't, you know Eighty-nine cents.
I think with all, with all due respect, you don't, you don't need to justify yourself, because this is just so ridiculous that, I mean, it's
I think we have the best deal in town.
Yeah.
We do great things for the camp. We probably I've always gotten phone calls from outsiders, Coventry Johnson, that want to come to our camp. And it's something that is for our kids. It's subsidized by our tax dollars for our kids. But you also have to look at it as, when, I know we're raising, you know, we have other financial issues, but it's a hundred dollars for a seven-week camp. Now you're twelve, maybe a dollar fifty, whatever. It's, it's not a big ask.
So didn't we have a non-resident rate or no? Am I dreaming that? We never did.
We did, yeah.
We did.
It was a long time.
Okay, so no non-residents rates, they're all residents of the town of Situate.
Only residents of Situate. That's why the number is, it's not capped, but it's for any Situate resident.
And of course, we employ local kids too, which is an important component of it.
Right. I mean, I'm totally in agreement with this, because I really think that this is a way we can generate more revenue to offset our expenses, which is what we really need to do, for sure.
Dave, one question. We discussed this and like that, you said that it wasn't going to be three fifty a kid, there was going to be a family plan. Because if they got three or four kids, it's not going to be three fifty for each kid.
And we also mentioned that there was possibility of having an outside source that may come in to help the parents out. So if we would like to have a cap, I know most towns would say three fifty for the first student. Or maybe for the first two, and then it's a max cap of maybe, I don't know, however you want to do it, I don't could be twelve hundred dollars for a family of four. It's, I can put it together however you want.
Well, if you had a family of three before, when you were charging two fifty, what would you charge a family of three? Seven fifty? Oh, you did?
Because it's two hundred and fifty dollars. I mean, there are a lot of families that will come over and say, this is what I have to afford, and we're always accommodating. We never turn anybody down. If someone can't afford it, because the cost is so low, if someone can't afford it, they're the first folks to stop it. And we don't ask for any requirements.
Do you, do you have any estimate? I mean, I would imagine the average family would be one or two kids. You know how many families you have there with three, four, or five kids?
I know, I mean, I know most of the families in town, but there are some with three children, there are handful with multiples. But then again, those are the families that come ask. I
Because there's a guy in Potable who's got ten.
Yeah, sorry.
Right? I see there's a guy in Potable, he has ten. So
Yep. Also to add, what Dave did say this, I don't know if everybody heard you. We have identified some sources of funds. I use the example, I'm involved in Boy Scouts and boys that are scouting, if boys and girls can't pay the full amount to camp, we, we provide a campership for them. So this make up the difference from what the parents can afford. And in a meeting with Dave and Chuck and myself and Kirk, we discussed this possibility, and there is funding. So no child will be told they can't come to camp for financial reasons. We'll find the difference from what the parents can afford and what the cost of the camp is.
So Gary, how, how do you determine what the, the family can afford? How is that, do they just say, I can't afford it? Or do they have to provide some type of proof?
We, you know, I can only draw on my experience with scouting. And I am a little rusty on that. I don't know if there was finances that were requested, but I didn't, when I was out proposing this to parents, because I did, it would be just because maybe you have a nice home and a couple of cars, but maybe you just had a new child, and there's an entire income missing this year. That qualifies as someone who, that particular year would be qualified for a campership. So we don't necess, we don't necessarily ask. As far as I know, I'd have to check again with council, but it's pretty much on the honest system as far as I know. I don't, wouldn't be asking for financials from people here, I don't think.
Okay, any other discussion? Abby?
Hi, Abby Groves. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Abby.
Okay, Hope Furnace Road. Thank you, Dave. And I was just wondering if maybe the council could task the Recreation Committee with maybe using this year as a trial year to kind of get some data on it and really come up with a complete proposal in terms of how we can structure this and the cost and everything related to the camp. That way there, we can have the solid evidence in front of us. Maybe this year is a trial year, and the Rec Committee can come back, pros, cons, what we're using the money for. Can we put it in the rec budget for the external things and just take the arrests as revenue? I know it kind of goes one hand washes the other when it comes to that, but at least we can have some solid data that goes with it. And then maybe if we do have to increase it next year, we can let, you know, families know at the end of the summer so they can plan accordingly. And as far as like scholarships and things like that, maybe we can get in touch with the school. I'm sure that they have data or, you know, more information in regards to, you know, like Gary was talking about, maybe a family is going through a hard time in, in a particular situation. I'm not sure. I'm just kind of brainstorming some different ideas, but
All right, thank you, Abby. No other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Thank you, Dave. Item E, potential approval of the Animal Control Services Agreement with the Town of Forster. Authorization for the Town Council President and the Town Treasurer to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish the foregoing.
Motion to approve.
I mean, I'll second it to get a discussion going. I haven't seen this contract. I mean, is there, what are the material changes in it and?
Well, the three thousand dollars a year for three years increase. And the other material change is if there's any vet bills or anything, medical bills, anything. Because some dogs have been confiscated, because Foster Police charged. And then the charges get dropped or something, and there's no restitution that Foster Police or the Town of Forster would make us whole. Because we had one incident where there was five dogs up there. And they were brought, we adopted them out and everything like that. And then for some reason prosecution, without the police department knowing it, dismissed the charges and didn't get restitution. So we were kind of left holding the bag on that one. But Forsters agreed since then that they're going to reimburse us. So we want to make sure in the future that the Town of Situate's made whole.
But did they say when they're going to reimburse us?
When they get the bill.
So is the reason why you didn't present this so we could see it? Or, I mean, we, you know, be good to look over it maybe? And when is it up for renewal?
The proposed changes were, I believe, were sent out. I, I'm not responsible for typing out a new contract, but we did negotiate. I don't know where the changes went to. We only had minimal changes. Three thousand increase each year. They paid fifty thousand this past year. New fiscal year be fifty-three, fifty-six, fifty-nine will be the last year. And as Chuck explained, we had one incident with seized animals out of Forster. Multiple animals that needed assistance being taken care of. And it was a bill associated with that. We've put it into the contract, built it into the contract, that they're going to be responsible for the cost if it's not restitution is made through prosecution. So I don't know where the changes of the contract go.
So in answer to the timing, the current contract ends on June thirtieth of this year, so the new contract would be effective July first of this year. I was under the impression, I was away as the packet was being put together. I thought it was in the packet. If it wasn't in the packet, we will follow up with that. There isn't a time rush on this, since we have an additional month before it expires. So if it wasn't in the packet, that was, we'll say, a backroom error, we'll put it on for next month and so everyone can see it.
All right.
I'll rescind my motion.
Same.
Motion, motion table?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's tabled. Item F, posting of the warrant, warning, and notice for By the means, posting of the warrant, warning and notice for the town, financial town meeting. Authorization for the Treasurer and Solicitor's Office to approve final version prior to publication.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second. A discussion on it? Borrowing no discussion, all favor? Aye, anybody against? It's all set, Peg? O M G, request from Roger and Gail Burdette. Owners of twenty-one Davis Road to allow additional funding from the town's community septic system loan. C S S L P, the request is to fund three thousand, three hundred dollars for the septic design cost. They have been approved for twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars funding under the C S S L P program guidelines. The approval can cover the cost of the septic design and installation.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second. A discussion on it?
Yes, I'd like some clarification because I don't understand this. Um, is the twenty-two thousand, one fifty cover the entire project?
Yeah, we've already approved that.
That's what I recall. What is this?
This is uh, more money they need for the septic design costs.
And the, and the total is allowed is what, thirty thousand, I think?
Yeah.
Per unit. So this is what, this is, this is under, this is underneath that thirty thousand dollar umbrella.
So we approved thirty and they qualified for thirty?
We've approved twenty-two, one fifty. Under the, your guidelines, they're seeking to, since they didn't use all thirty, so to speak. Uh, to cover the cost of the septic design and installation, which is not a cost covered under your guidelines.
So the twenty-two thousand, one fifty is for the system, the three thousand is the design of the system?
I believe it's for the system and ins- yes, for the system itself. The design and installation are additional costs that the homeowner typically covers.
So not to be prickly, so we could have cost us twenty-two thousand dollars on a system we don't have a design on yet?
No, they have a design. They have the design and cost for the installation. They're asking for.
Right, so ultimately though, these, this comes under the thirty thousand dollar um, umbrella and. They qualify for the thirty thousand dollars? Under the parameters of this program?
We haven't been asked to waive anything, so I think that's interpretation. That's correct. They, the, from a financial standpoint, they qualify for the program.
Totally, I know.
So they're, they're looking to cover. It looks like an additional.
Twenty-five thousand, four fifty total.
Correct. So it's thirty-four hundred dollars roughly.
But.
Thirty-four hundred dollars they're looking for.
I think, but what they're looking to, to cover is a part that normally isn't covered by the rules. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So is, so does this three thousand come out of the thirty thousand? Or are we guaranteeing three, three thousand?
No, it's, it's, I, no, it's not my interpretation. It's basically, my interpretation is the design, which has already been done. Uh, was thirty-three hundred bucks plus twenty-two fifty, one fifty to install, so twenty-five grand.
Right.
Under the thirty, and they, and they meet the financial thresholds for that.
What are you talking about, Peter?
The three thousand, three hundred, that's normally not covered by this loan. It's something that the applicant normally pays for themselves, correct?
So rereading this just for clarification. Under your guidelines, they qualify for an amount up to twenty-one, one fifty.
Twenty-one, one?
Excuse me, twenty-two, one fifty.
Okay.
That clue, that includes the design cost.
Yeah.
If, but your guidelines say they would have to pay thirty-three hundred dollars out of pocket. From, per the breakdown from their engineer is required by D E M to move forward with the installation. So that, so they're, they're looking for thirty-three hundred dollars more than what they qualify for.
Oh.
That, that, rereading this from Ruth Agla- Anglon from Rhode Island Housing, that's what she's saying.
Yeah, that's, so that, but that further complicates my question is that twenty-two thousand, one fifty did not include the design cost.
No, it says right here.
It says that it does, so that's incorrect on the agenda.
So if, if that's the case, then why do they need more money if we've approved twenty-two thousand, one fifty?
They don't.
They don't.
It says right here, the applicant does qualify for the total amount of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Which includes the design cost. It is up to the town if they will be okay with the borrower incorporating these fees into the loan. There are some towns that do not approve of the cost. Per the estimates, appears if the town does not approve of this, the borrower will have to come up with the three thousand, three hundred dollars out of their pocket. And so what they want to do is they want to include that in the twenty-two thousand they were approved for.
I, I read that, but what, what was, what's been said already is the twenty-two thousand, one fifty includes the three thousand dollars. So another three thousand dollars.
I think. Fine, so, hold on, hold on. Alright, so financially, they qualify for twenty-two, one fifty. But your guidelines, they would only get the eighteen, eight fifty in the invoice you see on the next page.
Okay.
They're asking for the additional, it's actually thirty-four hundred dollars if you look at that invoice for the design services.
And how much have we approved?
So, under your normal guidelines, if you do nothing tonight, they would get eighteen thousand. Eight hundred fifty dollars. And that doesn't come, that doesn't require our approval. That does not require your approval. So if you do nothing tonight, they get, they are able to get that. They're looking for the additional thirty-four hundred.
We're not responsible for the eighteen thousand dollars?
Well, you are, but just under the regular uh, guidelines that you don't see. It wouldn't come to you. It would just.
They qualify from a financial standpoint.
Correct.
Okay, so they want another three thousand dollars on top of the eighteen?
Correct.
Cause, and they want us to approve it because it's not normally part of this program.
It, it appears it's not part of your guidelines, and when it's put in front of other towns, it has, it has had mixed results. But they've met the financial thresholds for the twenty-one thousand or twenty-two, one fifty. Correct. So if, if the thirty-four hundred for design costs. Were normally allowed under your guidelines, you wouldn't see this because they were financially approved up to that amount. That would include that.
So I, I, I think some of the, the question Gary might be. Why do we have guidelines if we're going to approve more money than the guideline?
Exactly. I mean, this comes up on a regular basis. This is constantly with, with, with setting precedent. You know, and going against our own guidelines. Why bother? Why have speed limits? Why have laws? Why have rules? If you're just going to change them or ignore them or whatever.
Why don't we amend the guidelines? I mean, it's all, we want them that have the financial wherewithal proven that they can do it. And, and you can borrow into this program up to thirty thousand people. These are folks often that are struggling. And, you know, if they meet the financial thresholds, whether, you know, it's, you know, that's, this is all part of the, the system. It's not like um, these, it's not like you do it on the back of an envelope, as you well know. It's all part of one, one, you know, expenditure on part of a family. And if, so we should just amend the guidelines to include these costs, and if they meet the guidelines, the financial guidelines that we set. Then, you know.
I, I, I agree, you know, and, and just for my, if everybody would forgive me for a minute. Um, a bunch of Boy Scouts asked me once in all the years I've been on the council, what was the most difficult decision I had to make? And it was decision when I spoke up and said that we should not give money out to a family that needed it for a septic system. Because they did not qualify any way, shape or form financially. It's because it sets a precedent, and then everybody else has every right to come and ask us for the same uh, change to the rules.
So I would suggest we approve this tonight, and we also, uh, you know, have on the next agenda, hopefully, an amendment to the guidelines. To include these design costs.
I, I can go along with that. I just would like to understand. Why did we set the guideline at that in the first place? I mean, there had to be a reason for it.
It, I'm going to venture a guess, not having been here. But just how things get done sometimes from how the sausage gets made. I assume there were some default guidelines that Rhode Island Housing and D E M. Proposed when this program started many years ago, and the town just adopted them. Without much comment. I'm, I'm going to say they were, these are just the defaults, and they've never been really looked at.
Some towns do incorporate.
Correct.
So.
Well, it, it makes sense that we should incorporate it, because you cannot put a system in unless you have a design.
Right, and it's expensive to do that. I mean, that's, you know, a lot of people can't just pull out three thousand something dollars for them, so.
Well, that was, is David, are we putting the cart before the horse? Should we, should we put this uh, table this? And change the uh, the guidelines next meeting and pass it next meeting? Yeah, I know.
So, so that, I mean, that's a policy choice of the council.
Yeah.
What I would say practically speaking, so this isn't wearing the legal hat, pretend I'm not wearing the tie for a moment, right? I assume this is lined up, contractors are lined up and ready to go to do this. And so it's probably, uh, it would cause a delay and may cause a further delay. Beyond just the next council meeting for this particular family, one way or the other. They, they need, you know, I think they need to move forward was the indication based on the communications that aren't in writing, but. That Gloria, I know, had with Rhode Island Housing, that now this has been pending, at least probably in the Rhode Island housing system for a while. So that's outside the town's control. I'm not faulting the town, but I think practically speaking. If that's the direction the council would want to go of amending the, the guidelines. You can still move forward with making that exception tonight, knowing that you're going to be changing the guidelines next month. And that would have a better practical effect. Again, legally speaking, if, this is complete policy choice. But I'm just giving you kind of the, the boots on the ground, practical perspective.
But if, if we approve what they're asking for. That total amount then is uh, is assessed to their property, i- i- if you will. They are obligated to.
To pay that back.
Pay that back.
Correct. Yep, no, there, it, it may not be until they refinance. It may not be until they sell their home, but it is a lien on the property.
But it all, the total above the twenty-one or whatever.
So the total, the max you, that would be assessed, that could come out of the program if you were to prove tonight is the twenty-one. One fifth, twenty-two, excuse me, one fifty. If you don't do anything tonight, and they choose, for instance, to go forward at this uh, month, the lien would be for the eighteen, eight fifty.
Okay, so last thing is, uh, I'm a broken record when it comes to setting precedent. Um, but I'm also not so naive to know that this um. Being familiar with, with a septic system installation, um. You don't do this without a design. Obviously, our system is flawed, and it's something that should be corrected. But it doesn't open the floodgates to anybody who wants to come here for any reason or for any situation. And so you made an exception here, you should make an exception for me.
Right. What, what I would say is this doesn't set precedent, because these are based on the unique facts and circumstances surrounding these individuals. And this particular property and this particular septic system that's required.
Alright, go, go ahead, Tom.
What do you tell people when their septic system doesn't work and you refuse them a loan? Aren't you going to put a lien on their house?
Yes.
So you guaranteed the money?
Yes.
Didn't you vote for opera money for a hundred thousand dollars for the whole bond that we don't own? These people are from Situate, even if they go belly up, it's helping a neighbor.
I understand that, yes, but the, the one and only time that we have declined. Is when the folks were financially, so financially underwater. That the town stood a very good chance of uh, never being repaid for the money that we guaranteed.
Well, if you put a lien on their house, you got a good chance.
But in this particular case, the house was um, was, was mortgaged to the hilt, as they say. And there wasn't anything left. And so then I have the taxpayers of Situate to be concerned with. I'm going to saddle them with a thirty thousand dollar bill that we're not going to get paid back on, which is equally um, reprehensible.
Fine, tell those people why you put a hundred thousand into the whole bond then.
I, I, I'll be honest with you, Tom, I don't remember that, so.
Didn't it, wasn't it that amount in the opera money? Nobody remembers.
That was for the roof.
Thank you.
The roof.
What?
That was a roof, that was a roof.
Yeah, do we own that building, Peggy?
Oh.
We don't even own the building. We're not going to get paid back, and we have no lien on it. So that money's gone, hundred thousand. You voted on it.
Actually, it came out to seventy-five, so they returned fifteen thousand. They, they came out to seventy, now, I didn't hear what you were saying about a roof. It came out to seventy-five thousand, they returned fifteen thousand dollars. It was for ninety.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, barring no other discussion, off.
I just would like to say that we have done, the council has done this in previous times. If they meet the income guidelines and they can pay it back, they have allowed. The, the exceptions, the, the design, because you can't have a septic without a design, and if you're having problems. All of a sudden, uh, four thousand dollars is kind of hard to come up with, especially in this day and age. So, I mean, I know we have done it many times before. The only time that we don't do it, like Gary said, is if it, the, they're over limit. You know, their, their um, debt to income ratio is. Not favorable.
And so we just, we should just formalize it at a future date and just interchange the.
I think that's a great idea, and then we don't have to have a fifteen-minute conversation.
Right.
We're going to vote on it now? Okay, all favor? Any against? Passes. Motion adjourned. Motion made in second to adjourn, all favor? Aye, any against? You enjoy my company?